Streaming yet? We are, we're ready to go. All right. Welcome, everyone. This is our City Council Hybrid Meeting of Monday, October 4th, 2021. Time is 6:00 PM. And I call this meeting to order and ask if you are able to please stand and give the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would our clerk please take roll call?
Yes, good evening. Member Anderson?
Present.
Member Questa?
Present.
Member Russell?
Present.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
Member Wink?
Present.
Mayor Olson?
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. We have no study session tonight for Agenda 4, so we'll go on to Agenda 5, which is a consideration of the minutes of previous sessions. So I would take a motion to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of September 13th, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 13th meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Seeing no problems with it, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Agenda 5B is the minutes from September 20th. Any changes in those? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
I move to approve the minutes of the September 20th meeting.
Thank you, Member Sierra.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, and Member Anderson, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. And then 5C are the minutes for September 27th. Does anybody have any changes to those? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the September 27th meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. The next up is our Agenda Item 6, and tonight we have Recognition, which is an introduction of Sean Wysocki, our Director of Human Resources. Are you in the room, actually? Because I have not. Great, thank you. Welcome. I have a few things to read about you so that the public gets to know who you are. So first of all, though, I do want to start by thanking Dorothy Hargrove for the three months of service that she once again gave to our city as an interim HR Director during this time of transition. If you remember, she previously served the city in so many capacities, including the Library Director, Parks Recreation and Library Director, interim City Manager, Deputy City Manager, and previously as an interim HR Director. So, big thanks to Dorothy Hargrove and her willingness to come back and assist the city during the last three months. And this summer, the city began a recruitment process for the new HR Director. Instead of hiring an outside recruiter, the city actually administered the hiring from within and at no additional cost to the city. And it was a very successful search, thanks to the Communications Director, Chris Hargit. The city developed a professional recruitment brochure, which I think we've all seen. It was posted on numerous job sites, as well as the city's recruitment page. These efforts were designed to continue to professionalize and improve our recruitment process. And the city has now developed professional recruiting brochures for four positions, which is really a great thing to be done from within. Many qualified applicants applied for this position, and applicants were screened, and some were then invited for phone screening, followed by panel interviews, and finally meetings with the HR search team. And we're pleased to announce tonight that Sean Wysocki was offered the position of HR Director, and he started employment last week on Monday. So this is your first week here and first opportunity to see you in person. I am saying it right, Mr. Wysocki, right?
Yes.
Okay, good. He comes to us with eight years of progressive human resource experience, including a coordinator of businesses in Littleton and a human resource analyst and manager with the county and city in California. Since 2014, he worked in the public sector in his extensive experience in employee relations, labor relations, and organizational development. And he has touched many other areas of HR, such as recruitment and benefits, which is such an asset for us here. He holds a BA in Political Science from California State University, Northridge, a JD from Suffolk University Law School, and is a Human Resources Certified Professional. So he'll be working with Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd, our Finance Director Jackie Lowe, and our Information Technology Director Jeremy King to ensure creativity and connectivity and partnership between the administrative services departments. Sean has already hit the ground running, and we now have Sean squared in our offices. So we'll have to, we've got Sean Lewis and Sean Wysocki. But he's hit the ground running, has been working with former interim HR Director Dorothy Hargrove and our Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd on a work plan for his first three months in this position. And he's busy with department meetings, meeting directors and city employees, and learning his way around the city. So please join me in welcoming Sean Wysocki to the city. So, welcome to you. We're excited to work with you.
Thank you so much, Mayor.
To pull it right down to your mouth, unfortunately. It's very, yeah, just pull it down further, closer to your mouth, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, for that wonderful introduction. And thank you, Council members, for allowing me to be here tonight and be introduced to the city and city staff. I'm extremely excited for this opportunity. As you mentioned, I have extensive experience in the public sector, and I also was in the private sector for a while. And so I look forward to moving the city into the future and turning the HR team into a more strategic type of department that can partner with the various departments throughout the city and help the city achieve its strategic plans and its goals.
Thank you. We appreciate your choosing to work with us, and I wish you the best as you get started here and continue to learn. And each one of these council members, I know, would be glad to give you their perspective of what they've seen over the years and any insight they've gained. And our City Manager, Sean Lewis, would have done this tonight, except you know that he's out of town, although he's going to pop in. I think he's at ICMA along with Assistant City Manager Tim Dodd, who is on, but we'll see them over the course of the evening up on the Zoom. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our seventh Agenda Item is Recognition of Scheduled Public Comment. And the deadline to sign up to speak for the scheduled public comment is Wednesday at 5:00 PM, prior to the meeting through the City Clerk's office. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council, and there is an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will be no dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes in this section. Written materials for presentation to the council may be submitted to the City Clerk. And I wanted to say from the outset that Mayor Protam Sierra will be the one from council responding tonight, at least at the beginning. So, our first person up tonight is Laura McKenzie, an Inglewood resident, who's here to address council regarding feedback on pending changes to the off-leash program at Jason Park.
All right.
And I believe she's on Zoom, right? So...
I don't see that.
No, maybe not.
No, I think Laura, is she here in the...
Is she here?
I don't see her.
I don't either.
Were the speakers notified that we were starting right at 6:00 this evening in the meeting?
Yeah, they were.
Thank you.
Well, we can move on and come back.
All right. Our second person up tonight is Stephen Kelly, also here to speak about, let's see, I'll read it, regarding Jason Park and publicly reported data. So, Mr. Kelly, would you like to come up? If you can state your name and cross streets or where you live. And I love the T-shirt.
Thank you. He was a great guy. Steve Kelly, Radcliffe in Delaware. 133 violations at Jason Park, that's what was reported. The data presented to citizens and City Council on a matrix of 255 numbers was different from the rest of the data on that page. And it's page 83 of the report that Parks gave you all. Representative Questa told us at the end of the last meeting, he disclosed it after council members saw it presented for public consumption, page 83 of the report, after, I believe, three members used the data over a period of months in their critical comments about Jason Park, after they voted for severe restrictions to the off-leash program at Jason and other parks. Representative Ward asked the succinct question a few months ago, as the new council member, how many hours violations were at Jason Park? He was on it. That does not justify offense, though, off-leash hours violations. Joe jumped on that data like a dog on a bone when he said, "There are problems at the park." Was Joe aware of the extra look that Jason Park was getting that was not disclosed? Citizen Jake took that data and extrapolated to saying to you all, "There will be hun, well, no, there'll be thousands of calls by year's end." Did he know that there was extra looks being given to Jason Park? These players painted a perfect storm for the Gilberts and the Parks Department. Let me be clear, Jason Park data is different. Council members knew it, at least one did. They did not do the right thing and disclose the fact that code was asked by council to spend more time at Jason Park. Did council, I wonder, instruct code to go off-hours in order to generate for sure violations? I can tell you this, based on the data, there were no issues with code seeing dogs pooping on the soccer field. There were no dog-on-dog attacks. There were no dog-on-human attacks, zero. There were no aggressive dogs, as they saw it in the 128 times they showed up out of 133 calls for service. Representative Questa stated he disclosed to the public at the last meeting that he asked code enforcement to look hard at Jason Park, and he indicated that other council members, too, were involved. The result? Code enforcement came there more often than any other park. They showed up after hours 97% of the time and counted off-leashers in violation. It was tagged as code enforcement initiated in the subsequent CRT that came out. Really, they were council member-initiated. So to correct a question, I believe Ms. Wink, Representative Wink said, were there duplicities? There were duplicities. Code enforcement showed up 128 times. That is duplicity, multiple times. It wasn't a citizen calling multiple times. Code enforcement showed up multiple times. Is the 133 or 128 times justification for fencing off the south side of the park? Not logically. Is it justification for fencing off the multi-use soccer field? Not logically. Is it justification for limiting off-leash winter hours in the dark? Not logically. Is it justification for expanding off-leash hours? Yes, if one uses basic logic. Here's what everyone needs to know about these actions. The City Council operated with non-disclosure, and I believe that's dishonest. You have done a dishonest service to the integrity of your positions. Those who knew and let that data be presented and not disclose the truth of how that data point, 133, was different from all the other data points that were given in that page 83 matrix.
One minute left.
Thank you. You should recuse yourself from any vote to change the off-leash program at Jason Park. You should bring to light, well, no. Are you listening to me? Maybe not. I'll bring to the public the following fact about the underhanded way in which cities' contractors operated. When the off-leash task force finished their work, the city hired a mediator, wrote a letter to council members saying, "Don't listen to people that didn't get their way. Don't listen to citizens." They're asking that, they'd be muzzled. I believe City Parks has no valid reason to gut the program. City Council needed data, so they asked code enforcement to find the data, and Jason Park was spotlighted. This is bad governance. It's a lie of omission, and these are not acceptable actions to the citizens of Inglewood, in my opinion. Please, save face, kill this vote tonight, stop all this action, and if there's reason for change to the off-leash, have real data...
Time's up.
...to show for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Are there any questions? Councilmember Wink, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. So I want to be maybe overly explicit and make sure I'm clear on what you're saying. So, the comparison of the 133 calls that code enforcement supervisor Lewis reported coming in during that timeframe to Jason Park, you're saying, well, your point is to, is that those calls were, 128 of the 133 were not citizen-initiated calls. However, council was regarding those 133 calls as 100% coming from citizens and making our decisions, i.e., this park needs changes, et cetera, because 133 citizens made discreet calls, whereas the calls actually were simple checks of the park by our code enforcement team, which arose from previous conversations? Yes, or am I off?
That was a long question. I'd say council used, the 128 calls were represented just like any of the other 280 data points on "calls for service," quote-unquote.
Which were from citizens?
Well, who knows who they were from? They were calls for service, they weren't listed. But 128 out of 133 reported for Jason Park came from code enforcement, and we were told at the last meeting that code enforcement was asked to take a good, hard look, or I don't know the words, take a good, hard look at Jason Park. So code enforcement, as the data said in the CRT that came out, I think, well, the most recent one for dogs, it said it was code enforcement initiated. City Council members, member, asked for that to happen. So 128 times, code enforcement did the same thing. And the most egregious thing about that is they showed up outside of off-leash hours. If you're going to find data to restrict something, show up during the park hours, find the poops on the field or people, or, you know, find things happening that are bad, that are bad for kids, that are dangerous. Don't take 128 off-leash hour violations and paint that as a picture, as Parks did with a big red number one, as this is the most violation park there is, with this undisclosed extra look. And I don't know anything about any of the other 279 data points. I hope that answers your question.
I think it does, yeah. And you're now also pointing out, I am still asking questions.
Okay.
It didn't start with a question. I knew you were going to. And so you're always, you're also pointing out the fact that the calls were reported during one time period, as opposed to having been measured across, like, daytime, nighttime, this section of on-leash hours or off-leash hours. It was just for one segment of time, so it...
It was by one entity at one period of time. It could be one period of time, which was beyond the hours.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Going back to our first person, I believe might be here, so Laura McKenzie is next. Thank you for joining us. If you can give your name and your cross streets or address, whichever you feel comfortable with.
Yeah. My name is Laura McKenzie. I live in District 1, off Santa Fe and Dartmouth. And thank you for letting me be included when I was a little late. You all know me already as somebody who loves the off-leash unfenced spaces in our parks for dog walks, in particular, the perimeter of Jason Park. I was here two weeks ago already, as you know, and I did not expect to be coming back tonight, but I do have two extra points I wanted to offer as follow-up about Jason Park. And the first is that I did bring you a picture. I hope that that's going to be available on our slide. Thank you so much. When I talk about the perimeter of the park, I want you to have a good picture in your mind or in your notes about what I'm referring to. And that is because the current proposal is allowing access to the west side of the temporary park, temporary fence at Jason, and back to those old trees, with the orange walk around the edge of the perimeter, back around the west side. And then some people use the purple line for what I would call power walks. And so as these proposed changes are considered, if there's any issues that arise, this is what we're hoping that you are asked, or that's what you'd be preserving with your vote, to keep the changes, to keep this park access allowed. I do want to put in a good word for older people who use the park to get their day started, walking the orange loop or the power walk with their dog, and then they go off to start their day. I'm hoping that you will consider keeping the loop access available as a city asset similar to the walk track at Inglewood Rec Center, for example, or any social activity that's offered at Malle Rec Center. It's a similar sub-population that uses that park, and that's who you're preserving this for, along with everybody else, when you preserve access to the walking loop. So, there was a lot more I wanted to say about that, but there is a second topic I felt required to comment on tonight, similar to the preceding comment. When I came to my very first City Council meeting last two weeks ago and stayed to the end, I also was a witness to the disclosure 10 minutes from the end of the meeting that the figure for code enforcement calls to Jason Park are high, higher, highest of all the parks, because apparently four council members had told code enforcement to go visit the park more often. I guess to gather more information, I guess during the time the task force was also meeting, I'm not quite sure. I do appreciate the spirit of the attempt to clarify. However, I have to say, that's a little late, right? When we're talking about this for many weeks. Those of us who like off-leash have asked for delineation of the numbers. Those who are opposed to off-leash have brought those numbers and waved them around and put them up on the slide, saying, "Here's how many calls have gone to Jason Park. You people here at the council need to do something about that." And no council member said anything at those times about why those numbers were so high. So, the impact to me as a citizen is that it leaves me with the impression there's some people on the council, whose names I don't know, who might have been very comfortable voting on this issue, based at least partially on data that they themselves generated and influenced without disclosing that. If I'm wrong, of course, please let me know, and tonight is the time to do that. What I would ask you to do is finish the disclosure, the full disclosure on that item. When did council tell code enforcement to go more often to that park? How did that affect the numbers, starting when? How did that affect recommendations that were made? How many extra tickets were issued, and what were they for? How many actual dog-on-dog, dog-on-people, dog-on-wildlife incidents actually happened at Jason Park? And what did those increased visits actually reveal?
One minute left.
Was it a matter of violent unruly dogs, or was it a matter of people using the park off-leash when they shouldn't have been? You know, some of the numbers appear to be coming from the previous commenter, and maybe the council's not even sure on them. But in any case, I would ask you to weigh in on all of this tonight as council members, whether you were part of the group that told code enforcement to go over there more often, if you're staying on council or leaving or hoping to stay after election. What actually happened here? What was your role? What is your perception right now of this situation as a council member? Before you vote, I would ask you to put that on the table, and I do appreciate your attention to these two matters.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
I appreciate it. Thank you again for letting me come in late.
Our next Agenda Item is 8, is Recognition of Unscheduled Public Comment, and this is similar to the beginning, our first Agenda Item 7. However, you have three minutes during this time. And when registering for this to speak virtually, you will also receive a unique personalized invitation by email if you're not coming in person. And every speaker who wants to register should sign up with their own email address. I think tonight we have two, or maybe more than that?
We have one online and two that are here.
Okay, great.
And then also, if anybody that's come in that needs to sign up, if you could just let me know.
It's not too late, so if you want to let, if you want to let our clerk know, that's fine. All right, so starting with...
Our first speaker tonight is Doug Cohen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Give your name and your cross streets or address.
Good evening. Doug Cohen, Dartmouth and Marion. I'm going to tell you a story this evening about an amazing company. Ragsdale Industries has been a cutting-edge manufacturer and an inventor of new products for a generation, though located just south of Hampden on 70 South Calamath Street. Their mission statement says, "Ragsdale is committed to providing its clients with quality products and services that will continually meet or exceed the expectations." In the late 1970s, there was a great concern about the way food, soda, and beer cans were assembled. Lead was used to solder the sides of a steel can to make a cylinder, and the top and the bottom were then soldered on using lead. This process created a major concern about the unhealthy introduction of lead into the food and beverages. Some people did get sick. That process had been used for decades. The food industry began searching for a company who could invent a can that would eliminate the lead in the process. Coors Beer was one of those companies. They wanted a better beer can. Coors hired Ragsdale to invent and develop a new type of can made from a one-piece, one-piece of metal without using any solder. They did it. Ragsdale also developed a method that crimped the lid onto the can, so no solder was needed there. The solderless can that was developed for Coors revolutionized the food storage industry. Look at the cans at the grocery store the next time you go and see if you can find any of the cans with that seam along the side. People younger than 50 won't have any idea what I'm talking about. But the cans, the steel cans soldered with lead used to fail frequently and often would taste, you'd taste lead in your food. I want to say thank you to Ragsdale for a remarkable invention. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, go talk to your white-haired next-door neighbor. They can explain to you what the whole legal is with the lead-soldered cans. Thank you.
Thank you. You have a question from Member Russell. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. It's always great to hear from you. So are they still here? Are they still in business?
Well, my understanding is just fairly recently, the company has been bought out by another company, but the office is still there on Calamath.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't knocked on the door to see, but...
All right. Well, thank you. I always greatly appreciate your stories.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is online, Evan Simone. Are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yeah, I just wanted to call in. I live in Denver, actually.
Could you state your name and your address or cross streets of where you live?
Yeah, my name is Evan Simone. I live at 18 Colorado in Denver, but I ran a business there, a photography business, in the upstairs of Framed Art, there at 3065 South Broadway for about four years, then I moved it back into Denver. But I was just calling in support of the Inglewood Station project that they're looking at, doing down there, and hoping the council will go through with that. I heard about the project while, you know, I was working down there, and then I continued to follow it. I think it's a great idea, bring a lot of business people down in there. So I just was calling in with my support for that.
Thank you. Appreciate your joining us tonight.
Great.
All right. Our next speaker is Debbie Masters.
Welcome. If you can state your name and your address or cross streets.
Yes, hi. My name is Debbie Masters, and I live on the corner of Leighton and Fox Street. And my family has owned this property for 64 years. So, I'm here tonight to appeal to the council to take a look at the new tower that is going in on, between Fox and Galapagos on Leighton. It's an AT&amp;T tower that is going to be 32 feet tall. It is, I'm really representing my whole neighborhood. No one wanted to come out, but a lot of the people are getting elderly, and they're so concerned over it. And so, like I say, I, this is my home. If you take a look at where it's positioned, it is on evidently the easement between the sidewalk and the chain-link fence. And it was put in just like overnight. They drilled a 10-foot caisson, dropped in, whatever they do, some kind of pre-stressed foundation, which they're going to indeed attach a 30-foot, 32-foot tower, metal tower, which is going to be approximately 24 inches wide. It is also of great concern, even health-wise, you know, for some of the residents who, again, are aging, have health issues. It is 5G, and if you go on the internet and do your research, the verdict's still really out on 5G, whether it is dangerous to the public or not. So, that's all to be debated. But Mayo Clinic, the verdict is still out. Also, I feel like it's a hazard to even children, you know? Really, Inglewood, I think, is really turning around, and there's so much more activity with the youth and everything in our neighborhood particularly. And kids on bicycles and everything else, I mean, if they just barely get off their, their sidewalk, they're going to hit a huge concrete foundation to a 32-foot tower. And I know technology must go forward, and we're all using it here tonight, but when it is such an extreme move in a residential area, I just feel like I would appeal to the council to really take a hard look at this. Because when I approached the gentlemen who were working on the project, I was told, once our towers go up, they never come down, and that we've never taken one down yet. So, I appeal to you tonight to not let it go up. Then it won't have to be taken down. But I know we're up against big money, you know, a big, huge company, AT&amp;T slash Horizon, and, but I believe that this could be positioned in a much more appropriate manner at a public location like the school that is one block away.
All right, thank you. Your time is up. I'm sorry. But you may have some questions here. Councilmember, Mayor Protem Sierra may have a question for you. Ma'am?
Ms. Masters?
Ma'am? Do you want to come back? Because actually, one way to get a little more out is someone might ask you-
I thought my time was up.
Someone might ask you a question.
Okay.
Ms. Masters, good evening. Thanks for coming tonight. Is this the same tower, or are you speaking the same tower that made the news last week on-
Yes.
The 4800 block?
Yes.
Trying to think if there was another question that you asked, or that you... Okay, I think that's, that should be the, for my question, I'll respond as part of public comment tonight.
I know we need towers, it's just where they're located.
Okay. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Sierra's going to be responding in a minute, but is that it for our folks at King? Do we have one more?
That's it that I have, and that's somebody else.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. So, it's, Mayor Protem Sierra's response time tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight and speaking during public comment. I'll first speak to Ms. McKenzie and Mr. Kelly. Thank you very much for coming tonight to speak on the dog parks. As you know, we are going to be voting on a potential change tonight, and so, I do appreciate you coming and providing just your viewpoint of the city. Just one thing I do want to clarify, though, as, as city council members, we really only direct two members of the city, and that's the city manager and the city attorney. So, while we may get complaints and concerns from the city, we are only allowed to direct the two of them on any type of issues that concern the city. Whether or not the city manager or the city attorney do anything with that information, that's to be seen, but like anything else with, you know, concerns that come from citizens, we pass along that information. And so, if there was increased enforcement at Jason Park, I know that as part of discussions, I've received many concerns with citizens about Bates Logan Park, so there may have been increased enforcement there as well, but needless to say, there is a, really, we can only direct two city employees here within the city. After that, it's really just the city manager that takes the lead from there. But I just wanted to clear that, that point, whether or not that makes any difference in terms of your original comment earlier as well, Ms. McKenzie. Just wanted to provide that viewpoint. Mr. Cohen, thank you very much for coming tonight. It's been a while since we last seen you, so I do appreciate you giving us the history lesson. I'm not familiar with Ragsdale Industries, but I always love hearing the type of businesses and citizens that have made Inglewood their home, and this is no different. So, I do appreciate you coming out again tonight. Mr. Simone, thank you very much for coming. As you know, we will be, or for speaking tonight over Zoom, we will be voting on the Inglewood Station project later on tonight, so, yeah, I just really appreciate your viewpoint on that as well. And Ms. Masters, thank you very much on letting us know about the AT&amp;T tower, that potentially be going in. I believe right now there is still a work permit, work stop order, excuse me, on that tower. I believe there may still be some confusion on whether or not this is on the right-of-way or whether this is on private property. So, as of right now, I don't believe any work is being done on this, so stay tuned. Obviously, there, there may be more information that we may need to provide in terms of the rights of the telecommunications companies to put up 5G towers in the city, but that may be some information that I send your way as well, Ms. Masters. So, other than that, thank you very much, everyone, for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. We may have one more person who was in the room. Richard?
Richard Rice?
Yes, sorry.
I'm so sorry. If you could please come up. I'm sorry that I missed you.
Thank you, city clerk. I'm glad we could, so we have one more to fit in. Is there anybody else that we might have missed? All right, great.
I'm Richard Rice. I'm a 40-year resident of Inglewood. I live at Galapago and Layton. Monday morning, the 27th, I woke up to a rather loud truck in my front yard and went out to take a look at it. There's a guy boring a hole between a fence and a sidewalk. I've always been told I own my land from the sidewalk to the fence on the opposite side. I was told that when I bought the pri, bought the place 40 years ago. This gentleman seemed to be kind of upset. I said, what are you drilling land, drilling a hole on my land for, or digging a hole on my land for? He said, if you've got any problems, call AT&amp;T, bud. I said, okay, I'll call the city. I called the city, I don't know how many times, to the point where I got calls back from the city not to call them. Eric called me, I don't know how many times. Steve came by and took a look. Finally, after the hole was dug and, and one stop construction come by, and they dropped this cement plug into the hole, it was three foot, three or four feet wide and 10 feet long, into the hole, and they were about to encase it in cement, and code showed up and asked for permits and plans and permits and signatures. They had a few, but not all of them. They waited, he said, come, get me the plans for the tower and the signatures and permits for the tower. He said, you got to get them to me in 10 minutes. Forty-five minutes went by, no, nothing showed up. He basically told everybody to go home, and that's when the stop work order was put, permit was put on the fence. Since then, I put a, a snow fence around the thing because it was a, it was a, you know, hazard to anybody walking on the sidewalk. Here's an open hole on the, on my property or on right-of-way, so-called. I don't know what the right-of-way is there. I've got old plot plans for my property that show my, my house on the property line, the old part of the house near the alley. But that's all I have. I've checked the county maps, and they're kind of this way as far, as far as what the property goes and where, between the road, the sidewalk, and where my property starts. So, I'm at a loss. I don't know what to do from this point on. I don't have money for an attorney to fight this, so I'm just assuming it's up to you guys to fight it and kill, put it down. Because I've been told it's a tower, it's between 32 and 35 feet tall, dark green and big and ugly. I've been told that the beam doesn't go through leaves. The tower's in between two trees. Why put it there? I also was told, you can't put stuff within so many feet of the stop sign so people can see around it. Well, it's well within that, that boundary. So, I don't know what to do. I've got pictures here in case any of you would like to see what, what they've done, but-
If you would like to give any pictures to the city clerk, you certainly can, who is sitting over here to our, to your right, and we can take them from there.
Okay.
I am, I, I'm sure, do others have questions from tonight? I have one, but anybody else have one? So, so the city has your information so that we can contact you to give you more information as it progresses?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. So, I think we have a few more things. Member Questa, do you want to ask or make some comments to pass things? Okay, that's fine, too. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem, for responding. I do want to clarify some things that I believe were, were distorted, and just so everybody has a clear understanding of what's taking place here. And I know that there's a tremendous amount of passion regarding the dog parks. We, as council members, receive complaints from citizens very, very frequently, concerns, and these need to be addressed. And it was at least when we were in the other chamber, which would have been pre-COVID, that we were getting a fair amount of concerns regarding the dog parks, and it was off-leash hours, it was various violations there. And it was at that time that I was certainly one of the members that we had code enforcement in front of us and the city manager, and we said, I'm hearing concerns. If that's something you guys could tend to, we would, I would certainly appreciate it. From there, Mayor Protem is correct, the mayor, or excuse me, the city manager and park directors, they determined how they're going to go forward, but we received complaints from citizens, and we asked the enforcement group to go see if there were those complaints. Those complaints existed. We heard complaints of violations, and our code enforcement group went out there and found violations. That's not bad government to me. Those numbers, as far as I'm concerned, weren't used to then further, you know, where we are currently. I think that that was more the start of the conversation. And so, I, the only reason I brought that up last week is because I felt like our Parks Department and code enforcement is getting beat up a little bit on this, and I don't think it's warranted. There's plenty of citizens that have concerns about, you know, everybody following the rules at that park. And violations were found, and that's why I find it, I'm not just, I'm unsure why it's, there's a concern about park enforcement enforcing the park rules, which, which is what took place. And again, I supported that, and I get calls in the past week, I've received calls regarding cars speeding down a certain block. I pass that along to the, the city manager. There's a busted crack at the Bellevie sidewalk that somebody could trip on, pass that along to the city manager. These are concerns we receive all the time that pass along to the city manager. That, to me, is a function of what I do. So, that all happened in a public meeting on the dais that is visible. There's nothing that wasn't disclosed, back room, that was all very, very public. I asked code enforcement, on the behest of citizens contacting me, can you go by the park at your convenience and, and see if, if these are violations are in fact true? That was where that ended. They gathered information on their own. I didn't even see that information again until it worked its way through all the, you know, the study groups we had and so forth. So, that, for me personally, was a matter of responding to citizen concerns, and I think the concerns were warranted. They've, they've found plenty of violations out there. That was the first one. Secondly, Mr. Rice, thank you for appearing tonight. I've had some communications with the city manager on this, and I imagine that other folks have to appear, and I'll continue working on that, and it's certainly a concern, and we'll, we'll find out where that property lies. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a council request regarding the AT&amp;T tower, and I think this is probably a legal, a legal question, so maybe our city attorney could look into, into it. The question is, what, what in our municipal code guides or restricts what can go on public right-of-way, or even if this isn't public right-of-way? But the, that's kind of the question is, what, are there tower height limitations, size limitations, bulk limitations, anything like that? And also, the second question would be, what is the process that a company like AT&amp;T would go through in order to get approval for something like this? And then finally, where, where is that? Where is this particular tower in that process?
Great. Thank you. And Member Ward, do you have a-
Just for the record, Mayor, I visited this property while I was out canvassing earlier this week, and I sent Member Anderson's first two questions to the city manager already, so they, they are pending.
Yeah, I think easement's a part of that as well, so, yeah, I think we've had a couple council requests like this in the last couple of years, so it might already be an answer ready at your fingertips, because we've had this happen, not quite this level, but, yeah, thank you. Any further? All right. Moving on to agenda item nine, consent agenda items, are any of, I didn't receive anything, I don't believe, on pulling any of these. Were there any? Councilmember Russell? Did I miss something?
I pulled probably six of them.
I must have missed that. All right, which ones?
I would like to pull 9B1, 9C2 and 3, and 9C5, 6 and 7.
All right, then I will ask for consent agenda items, a motion to approve 9C1, 9C4. Could I have a motion to approve those?
I move to approve 9C1 and 9C4.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Member Russell, I'm sorry if I missed, did you send me an email on these?
I did send you an email. I sent it to you and the city manager. I think the city manager forwarded it to the city clerk, I think.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's start with 9C1. Could you-
9B1?
I'm sorry, 9B1.
Yes, I just, I have a quick question on this. Do these conduits have anything to do with 5G?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Russell. So, we, we reached out to Level 3, who's the, who's the company looking to, for this easement, and the response we got was, the only, there's three conduits that they're looking at, one of which will have fiber in it, the other two, they are, they're just drilling empty conduits for future use. And so, this is a fairly common practice. We asked the 5G question, and they did not have anything to comment on that, and so we, we got no further information as it relates to 5G. What we do know is there are three conduits that follow our rules as it relates to crossing city ditch.
Okay. I appreciate that answer, and the reason that I asked this question, and I knew it didn't really pertain to what they want to do under the city ditch, but city council does have the authority to allow people to drill under there or not. And I think the citizens, I've been getting calls probably occasionally in the last couple of years, and I do think that there is enough concern about 5G that it was a worthwhile question to ask. It's a little bit concerning that they would not answer that question, so.
Well, what they did say is they do work, they do have private clients, and so they were not at liberty to disclose who that client was, and the other two conduits were remaining empty. That's, that's the information we got when we asked them.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
All right, 9B1, could I have a motion to approve CB43?
I move to approve 9B1.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any discussion? Member, Member Russell?
So, is it possible to give them authority to do one conduit and not do the other two?
Are you asking me?
Well, I, I'm actually asking council. I'm asking coun, I know we can do that, but I'm wondering if, I mean, it is very frustrating when a council tries to make decisions and we ask questions, and then we don't get a response. I mean, I guess at the least, I would like to table this for bringing it back for future and perhaps allow staff to go back to the company and just say there are some concerns.
All right, thank you, Member Ward.
I think maybe the issue might have been with the question itself. You know, fiber technology carries data, and I'm not a telecom engineer, but I know that this is wired technology, and 5G is wireless technology. But something has to supply the data to the 5G tower. So, when we ask, does this have anything to do with 5G? It could have something to do with 5G, it could be going to a corporate location, it could be supplying anything. It's like a pipe, and you, we ask what's going to be in it? Well, data. That's the answer to the question. So, I, I would support this. I don't share the concern over 5G, and as far as putting three conduits with one, there's a, a cost, the initial cost of installing the conduits is far greater than the cost of pushing the cable through them. So, my suspicion is that Level 3 wants to do this project once, get approval once, instead of having to come back subsequently for approval.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Director Van Rye if he wants to add some more into this for clarity.
Yeah, I need to provide a clarification on their-
Okay, great. Thank you.
On their answer. I'm just going to read their answers so that I don't, I don't miss it. So, we asked what the, what the conduit's for, and the response was only one will have fiber in it initially. This will be a trunk line for a private contract. It will not be used for 5G or local telecommunications services. Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to disclose our customer. Unfortunately, I'm not allowed to disclose our customer. There will be two vacant conduits available for future use. We do not know, we do not know what those will be used for at this time. I probably should have just read that to begin with, so.
That's helpful, thank you.
That is straight from them.
Thank you. Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that response. I don't share the concerns that Councilmember Ward does. I don't represent the companies that want to do businesses with this city. This council has the authority to do that. I represent the citizens in this city, and I want to do what's in the best interest of them. I'm sure any company would only want to drill once, but that's not our problem, it's their problem. So I just, I will not be voting yes on this. I will be voting no, because the citizens in this city are my utmost concern. Thank you.
Councilmember Ward?
Drilling operations cause disruption in the neighborhood, they make noise. I'd rather have our citizens experience that once rather than multiple times.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, could we please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show six ayes and one nay, the one nay being Councilmember Russell.
Thank you. The next one is 9C2, right? Change order number two for janitorial services. Did you have questions, Member Russell?
I do, thank you. Have we included this information in the 2022 budget? I mean, because I'm assuming that we are going to be hiring out or contracting janitorial services.
That's correct. So we still have, so in 2022 and even for the remainder of this year, we have a combination of our existing staff plus a contract. So the change order before you tonight is to continue that contract through approximately the first of November. We just received responses to requests for proposals from janitorial companies to provide that service for the remainder of the year and into 2022. So we're evaluating those now, and we'll bring a new contract back to you here in the near future. So this is just sort of a stopgap measure, but it is included in this year's contract or this year's budget as well as next year's.
Thank you. So is it possible at some point we will go back to having in-house janitorial service?
Yes, that's certainly on the table. We're planning to evaluate that after a six-month period, just to see how things are going with the contractor, and then again at one year. So we are anticipating a one-year contract to at least see how it goes, and then have kind of a mid-year review as well as an end-of-year before we make that decision.
So do we still have quite a few janitors left?
We had a total of 12. We're down to four right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, could I have a motion to approve 9C2?
I move to approve 9C2.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. Next is agenda item 9C3 supplemental, or Broken T Golf Course Back Nine Irrigation renovation. Councilmember Russell, what are your questions here?
Thank you, Mayor. So was this project included in the 2021 budget?
This project was not included in the 2021 budget, was not budgeted for.
And is it because, so we're going to have to do a supplemental appropriation, or was there enough money to cover this project, and something else got left?
I believe we're supposed to be doing a supplemental on this.
Okay, I think I read that in the packet, and so I just, I just wondered why that it didn't get put in the budget since it's been 50 years. There were no emergencies at the time, or?
It wasn't put in the budget because we weren't certain we had sufficient funds at the time, and it wasn't apparent until this year that we realized that we did.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve 9C3?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Wink. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Next is 9C5, contract extension with Vets Securing America. Member Russell, what are your questions here?
So on this one, the reason I pulled all three of these together is they are all connected to the Eevee budget, and so this one, I really didn't have a concern so much until I went back. My concern is, is there enough money in the budget to cover all of these? That was a, this one here, there was no problem, but when I got to the very last one, 9C6?
Seven.
Seven, 9C7, I'm not sure there was enough money according to the budget tabulation.
I think we need to take these one at a time, so 9C5, are those your same concerns?
9, well, there's going to be a concern with one of them if there's not enough money in the budget, so.
I know, but we pulled them one by one, so we cannot vote one by.
Right, I mean, I am all for, for the Vets Securing America. I think they're doing a good job, I've seen them here. The, I guess, the question that I have is this contract is for $196,200, is that correct?
Hundred ninety-eight thousand.
Oh, that's $198,288. So in, on the budget, the contract approval summary where it shows the budget, it's, we budgeted $250,000 in landscaping and grounds professional services. Year-to-date, we've spent $189,366.32, and there's $60,663 in the budget for this year. So I'm assuming we will use that $60,633 to the end of the year and then go into next year's budget?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Russell. The uniqueness with all three of these contracts is that they all expire around mid to end of part of October. So we're in, there's a portion of each of their budgets that's in the 2021 budget, and our portion of each of those contracts in 2021 and then in 2022. So we're trying to reflect in that contract approval summary both the amounts still remaining in the 2021 budget as well as that anticipated in 2022. So it does get confusing, but we feel comfortable that there's adequate funds available to cover all three of these.
Okay, and I mean, my bigger question will come in the next two.
Okay.
But I, so I am okay with this. The only reason I brought that up, Mayor, was because?
Can you go ahead and make a motion to approve it, then?
All right, I will approve 9C5, renewal of contract with Vets Securing America Corporation for unarmed security services.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. No discussion? Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
And next is 9C6, which is our contract extension with Keason Landscape Services Incorporated. So, Member Russell?
Okay, so my question on this one, this, the budget part, and it says not to exceed $500,000, which is, let me turn to the budget page. So we, actually, for 2021, the budget was $530,000. We've spent $452,037.50, there is $77,962 remaining. And so I guess, first of all, my question is, is it possible that we could spend well under $500,000?
Yes. And as we experienced last year, as you know, I believe we came to you for two separate change orders because we had such an anomaly of a snow year. So it is very possible, and that's exactly what we debated, should we go with our kind of annual average dollar amount for the contract, or should we err on the high side, knowing that we only spend based on actual time and materials? So we did decide and are requesting that we kind of go on the high end, and knowing that we will track it by storm for only actual time and materials expended, rather than anticipating potentially a future change order if we have a very high snow event or snow season.
Right, I appreciate that, thank you. And I remembered the two change orders, and so this is, so if we approve not to exceed $500,000, if, it really will eliminate the change orders until all the money is gone, and then we have to do something else.
And if we have that much snow, then hopefully, knock on wood, that we're not there, but we would have a very, very high snow season then. If, but we, if that's the case, if we're, you know, butting up against that $500,000, we would have to come back to you again for a change order. And hopefully, we don't do that this year.
Okay, thank you. So, I mean, it was those two change orders that kind of prompted the question to begin with, so.
All right, could I have a motion to approve 9C4? I mean, sorry, 6?
I move to approve 9C6, renewal of contract with Keason Landscaping Services Inc. for Inglewood Environmental Foundation Snow and Ice Control Services.
Thank you, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further discussion?
I would like to encourage the next council to talk about the way that we think about asking for supplementals or not, because I think, and it might be something to talk about early on, because I think what happens to our staff is that they feel like, I don't know if this is true or not, sometimes your hands get slapped for having to come back and have supplementals, or we have an angst about it, and maybe other times where we wish you'd overdone it, so it might be a good thing to just kind of say, where do you want us to err? Maybe it's on the lesser side, because you don't mind coming back, and we don't mind either, so.
Yeah, I would say that we're, we don't feel that way at all, just that it takes everybody's time to process another change order, so we're trying to find that right balance for both staff and council.
It takes a lot of time for you all, right.
Just a point of order.
Thank you.
Isn't this on the agenda next week?
I think it might be, but I would think that part of this should be a next city council, too, but, anyway, all right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
On to our last, 9C7, staff recommending approval by motion of contract with Terror Care Associates for landscaping ground maintenance, so, Member Russell, again.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the one that I am concerned about, that if we do approve the 200, not to exceed $250,000, that we really do not have $250,000 after we have approved the $198,000. And so, do you have a solution to that?
Again, I think we feel comfortable, we can certainly table this one if you would like us to gather more information, but we could certainly verify that with finance and come back with a, with a, just a verification that we do have the available funds, both, again, kind of separated between a little bit for this year and most in 2022.
I would like to table this one and get more information.
Director Lowe, would you want to speak to that at all? Or I saw some head nodding, I don't know which way it meant.
We definitely can look into the details. Would like to share the Eevee actuals year-to-date August for the common ground area management compared to the budget. The 2021 for the common ground management budget, we have 1 point, close to 1.5 million. At the end of August, we have spent close to a million, so which means we'll still have half million left to spend down for the rest of this year. So feel comfortable even we might overspend this particular line item for this vendor, but overall budget, we should be okay, especially the contract is spent to fiscal year. But we could definitely do more research and come back next, next week.
All right, thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the 9C7 contract extension with Terror Care Associates?
Just a point of information, Mayor, if we want to table this, do we do that first, or do we have to still make a motion to approve?
I think we'd have to do the tabling first, right? So I didn't see anybody lighting their up, so go ahead, do you want to table?
I move to table this until the next meeting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, please, I think the money is there, so I just think let's get it done and over with, and our director of budget finances have told us it's there. As a matter of fact, I think we really often don't spend enough of our budget, and then we, yeah, so anyway, I'm fine with moving ahead with it, so please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
On tabling.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Nay.
Mayor Olson?
Nay.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Wink and Mayor Olson.
All right, so we'll see 9C7 come back to us after we've gotten the information to make it clearer to everybody. Thank you. No public hearings tonight, and so we're on to agenda item 11, ordinances, resolutions and motions. So our first is 11A1, it's our council bill 45, staff recommend city council approve a bill for an ordinance for the 2022 City of Inglewood budget. Our director of finance, Jackie Lowe, is here for this to answer questions.
I think we have two other participants, city manager Lewis.
I don't see manager Lewis on yet, is he?
I did let him know we were getting close, and he should be joining us any minute.
Okay, great. Do you want to kick us off, and then who else was going to join us?
And the budget administrator Jenny Nolan.
Yep, and I see her, she just joined us.
Great.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and the council. We have five ordinances related to the 2022 budget tonight.
Bless you.
The first one we want to go over with you is we ask the council to approve a bill for an ordinance for the City of Inglewood 2022 budget. Do you have any questions about the ordinance, any details and the numbers?
Council, any questions at this point? Things you still don't understand or want to have clarified for the public? Councilmember Russell?
Thank you. On page of five of eight, where it's talking about capital projects and the Public Improvement Fund, there is a transfer out of $1,534,122. Where is, where does that go to?
Thank you. The Public Improvement Fund, if you see transfer out in the amount of $1,534,000, of that, 1.5 million was transferred to the Capital Project Fund. You will see transfer in, in the amount of 1.4 million under Capital Project Fund. Of that, we'll also transfer $13,400 to General Fund, and the remainders transferred to, small amount transferred to SURF. Did I answer your question? Because we transfer money from the Public Improvement Fund to the Capital Project Fund.
So in the General Fund, is it under, what is it under?
$134,000. Under General Fund, you will see a transfer in, $134,000.
$122?
$134,000, yes.
Okay, that's under other financing sources.
Correct. That's a transfer from Public Improvement Fund to pay for the energy, the energy project on this building.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve council bill 45, the 2022 City of Inglewood budget?
I move to approve Council Bill 45.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Ward. Any further discussion? Councilmember Russell?
I would just like to bring something up, and I will probably talk about this under council member's choice instead of here. I, I do have a problem with the $20,000 that is going to the Chamber of Commerce under the Community Development Department. I will not vote down this budget because of that $20,000, but I have major concerns. And this will not, that $20,000 will not come back to council once this has been approved. And so I will be disclosing that information during council member's choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please vote. I, I asked the city clerk if she would ask that, the slide that was up there that was not on the topic that we were talking about be taken down, so she was doing that.
Okay, excuse me.
Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. And that will come back to us on second reading under consent, unless anybody tonight wanted to not be there, but that's where it will come. All right, then the second is Council Bill 44, which is the 2022 City of Inglewood appropriation. Again, Director Lowe is here to answer questions. Any questions about this one that you would like to either get clarification on for yourself or the public? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve Council Bill 44?
I move to approve Council Bill 44.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any discussion? All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. And I just wanted to note that Manager Lewis is now on, so if we have questions for him, too, he's here to answer. So the next is 11, are we, we're C, right? A, 11A3, Council Bill 48, any questions on the tax mill levies? Seeing none, could I have someone make a motion to approve Council Bill 48, the 2022 City, City of Inglewood Property Tax Mill Levies?
I move to approve CB 48.
Thank you, Member Anderson?
My second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Great. Next is 11A4, Council Bill 46, the 2022 South Platt Renew Budget. And again, Director Lowe is here to answer any questions. Councilmember Russell?
Thank you.
That's right, your lights are, but not the mic.
I have a question on the budget section on the back page. The, it says here, "The joint venture does not have, nor is it anticipated to ever have, the power to assess and add velourum tax on the property of the participating cities. According to its management's, accordingly, it is management's contention that this would remove it from the scope of the State of Colorado budget law." So I, I guess I would like to have an answer on what part of the State of Colorado budget law are you suggesting that, that we are exempt from?
Yeah, let me defer this question to Jenny Nolan, if she has any information, or Director of Utility South Platt Renew.
Director Van Rye or Ms. Nolan, do you want to, I see you've unmuted. Would you like to speak?
I'll have to look at the, the case law more closely, but because the, the two cities have, within their sewer funds, the budgets allotted for the South Platt Renew Treatment Plant, that is where the authority rests in order to administer, you know, fees for the treatment plant services. So let me do a little bit more research on my end to get a more definitive answer for you.
Director Van Rye is here, too, so he may have some to add to it?
I was just going to actually say, I think that, I think that's the, the right answer is because, because the, the assessment of fees, rates and fees to, to support South Platt Renew, because it is a joint venture, is done through the two cities, and that's done through the two cities sewer funds, sewer enterprise funds. And so, with the exception of some small assessments that we do for, for septic haulers who, who use our facility to dump their trucks, that we charge, the rates and fees that support the, the South Platt Renew are administered through those two enterprise funds. So we, as a, as a joint venture at South Platt Renew, don't have an ad valorem tax that we, that we assess as South Platt Renew.
Okay, thank you for that. And so, I guess what I just want to make clear for the constituents is that the South Platt Renew is a taxpayer-owned facility. I mean, it is owned by the City of Littleton and the City of Inglewood, and they paid for all the infrastructure and putting it all together, right? So this really has nothing to do with that piece of it.
Yeah, the one thing I would say is, from a clarification perspective, is I would say ratepayer as opposed to taxpayer, because it's, it's, it's not a taxed entity, it's, it's paid for through rates and fees.
So are the rates and fees generated then also for the, there was a huge bond issue at the beginning to build the plant. And is that bond issue paid off?
So the, so the bond issue that we're aware of is from 1975. That has long since been paid off. Any amount of contribution, there were grants that were associated, there was EPA grant, as well as a state grant to help fund the initial, the initial plant as it was being built in the late 70s. And that grant is, has been, long since been depreciated, so there's no remaining residual value from that. Beyond that, for as many years as I have, have looked back, it is rates and fees based. And so it's, it's not something that draws from taxes, it draws from the sewer rates and the sewer fees.
But the ratepayers still own it, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. I forgot the second part of my answer. Second part of my answer is the citizens of the two cities own the, own the plant.
Okay.
And so the citizens as ratepayers own the plant, and it is owned by the City of Inglewood and the City of Littleton only. And everyone else it serves outside of the City of Inglewood and the City of Littleton are extraterritorial customers or connector districts.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. And that's also why we take the, we take out a lump sum. There's always the same at the beginning of the year in, in Inglewood's budget, right, and in Littleton's.
Yeah, they're, they're large, the capital side is equal, and the reason the capital side is equal is so that neither city owns more of the plant by investment. The operational side is based on flow, and that generally runs about 54% Inglewood, 46% Littleton. It stays generally around there. And that's just based on the, the flow rate coming in from the, the pipes that we measure from Littleton and from Inglewood.
All right, thank you very much, Director Van Rye, and Director Lowe.
All right, we have a motion to approve of Council Bill 46 for the South Platt Renew 2022 budget.
I move to approve Council Bill 46.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Great, on to 11A5, which is our Council Bill 47, the 2022 South Platt Renew Appropriation. Questions for staff, Director Lowe, again? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve 11A5, Council Bill 47?
I move to approve Council Bill 47.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further questions or comments? I mean, yes, go ahead, Member, or Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Director Lowe, Director Van Rye, and your entire staff for putting together the budget. I know it's been many months that we've been talking about this, and really happy to the place that we've gotten towards the end of the, towards the end of the year, especially considering that revenues were not as bad as what we were expecting as part of the pandemic. So, really happy for this. Y'all get a few days off before we start talking about 2023 budget. So, really, really appreciate. Thank you, Director Lowe.
Yeah, thank you for a directive, directive from the council member. We're very pleased to present a balance of budget to council for 2022.
Thank you. And it is my pleasure to be voting on my 12th budget for this city, and, and last, not that I'm glad to be out for the 13th, but I am proud of the way the city has managed its budgets over the 12 years I've been here, and the way in which councils over time have really been careful and tried to think things through, given the context of which we're in in each, each time period. So this is a good, this is a good, solid budget. It's a very different economy, and it's quite different than what we thought it might have been a year and a half ago, given the, the pandemic, too. So I'm very thankful for where we are, and appreciate all the staff directors who've contributed to it, and everyone else on your team, Director Lowe. So, without any further comments, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. The next is 11A6, which is Council Bill 40, the City of Inglewood and Mile High Flood District seek to match funds in order to update a flood study along with the Little Dry Creek in Inglewood. That was the slide that was up here for a long time that I thought was distracting a bit, so I asked it to be moved. But if we want to show that again, our staff directors, or directors here, Deputy Director of Public Works Engineering and Asset Manager, Tim Hoss, and Capital Project Engineer, Devin Keener. Is that right? Yeah. Great. Go ahead and give us any information you want and questions from council.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for that introduction. Devin's prepared a brief PowerPoint presentation to summarize this item for you, and then we'd be happy, happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Tim said, my name is Devin Keener, and I am a Capital Project Engineer here with the City of Inglewood. Tonight, I will be briefly discussing an IGA with the Mile High Flood District in regards to drainageway planning and mapping on Little Dry Creek. Go to the next slide. So the purpose of the project and why we're doing this, it's been almost 50 years since the last major drainageway plan and flood hazard area delineation on Little Dry Creek. In the past 50 years, more accurate rainfall data has been produced, and Inglewood has experienced more development along Little Dry Creek. So our goal with this IGA is to update floodplain limits and determine areas where flood mitigation projects may be needed along that stream. So the location of this project is between South Clarkson Street to the South Platt River, all within the limits of Inglewood. So the city's cost share on this is going to be $45,000. That's 28% of the total. Mile High Flood District's cost share is going to be 72%, which is $115,000. And the reason why this isn't a 50-50 split is because Mile High Flood District is paying for 100% of the flood hazard area delineation cost, or the flood mapping cost. Funding for the city's cost share is available in the General Stormwater Fund. So in summary, staff is recommending that city council approve a bill for ordinance for this IGA. The final drainageway report will provide us with suggestions for future drainage improvement projects along Little Dry Creek. Staff will review the suggestions and likely bring future IGAs for construction of those mitigation measures to city council down the road. And that concludes my presentation tonight. Do we have any questions?
Thank you. Member Ward does. Go ahead.
We've recently approved a fair amount of work in this specific area, rebuilding the intersection at Broadway and Hampden, for instance, and rebuilding the Little Dry Creek Plaza. How, if at all, will this study consider that work when it's not going to be completed over the course of the study?
Tim, do you want to answer that one?
So the, the study will look at the hydraulics and hydrology of the stream and consider the, the improvements that are there now. It'll be included in there, and then there'll be, the outlet of that is controlled by that big box there in Little Dry Creek Plaza. So that really kind of sets the hydrology in that area. So it shouldn't change a whole lot due to the box being there. It won't, it shouldn't show a whole lot of difference. It's mostly upstream where we have the open channel, kind of the natural areas where the, the changes are expected to be seen in the study.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is regarding how, how did this process happen? When something like this with Mile High Flood Control District, we have an IGA with them, was this initiated from the city side, or is this part of a broader program that Mile High Flood Control District is doing?
Sure, yeah. This is a part of the overall Little Dry Creek study. The, the creek runs through Cherry Hills Village upstream of us, so it's a part of the overall updating of the Little Dry Creek hydrology as it flows through all the different cities. This is just for our portion of the creek that's in Inglewood.
Okay, do they, or do you know if there's a similar study going on in Cherry Hills Village as well to complete the same?
Yeah, theirs recently just got completed. They, they, theirs a little bit ahead of us. But yeah, theirs has gotten done, so ours will fill into that study and then work off of what they did up there to tie in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoss. Thank you, Mr. Keener. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Could I have a motion to approve the Council Bill 40?
I move to approve Council Bill 40.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Any further discussion? I think, I, one of the nice things about this is the way that it does dovetail with what's already been done by our neighbor. And so, looking forward to see how it complements each other, because this is not a, a one-segment, none, no impact on each other, and it does. So it's good that they actually worked ahead of ours a bit, because that'll benefit us. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
Thank you. And next is 11A7, which is our Council Bill 42, our Zone 2021-001 Five Field Inglewood Station planned unit development at 1070 West Hampden Avenue. And our staff has recommended adoption, adoption of this bill for an ordinance at first reading and approval of the Five Field Inglewood Station. And our senior planner, Brooke Bell, and planner two, Will Charles, and deputy director of engineering, Tim Hoss, and traffic engineer contractor, Jay Schneider, are all available, I think, in various forms, maybe, to answer questions tonight. So take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. This item came before you on September 7th for a public hearing. With that, it also had a recommendation from staff, as well as planning and zoning commission, to approve this planning and development with the conditions listed out in the council communication. As you said, we have members from our engineering, our traffic, as well as our community development department here to answer questions, as well as members of the applicant team. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, questions for this team and those here tonight, unless you had more to, did you have more to present? No, I didn't think so. So, go ahead, Member Questa. You're about to put your button on. No?
A question for the applicant.
Yeah, that's great. Let's bring the applicant up, then, or who, who is here representing them tonight? And we have a middle section there they could come in, too, if you wanted to write in here. Thank you, gentlemen. If you could just turn the green light on for the microphone, pull it close, that'd be great. And state your name and what's your position.
How's that? Good.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thanks.
What was your name again?
Oh, Kevin Farrell, Five Field Realty Corp.
Thank you. Member Questa, did you have?
Yes, sir. Could you run us through the expected rental rates one more time, and how much of that will be dedicated to low-income housing?
What was the second half of that question?
And how much of that will be dedicated to low-income housing, or?
None of it is dedicated to low-income housing.
Thank you. And the expected rental rates? I believe you.
We've got studios starting at around $1,400, one bedrooms, as, as low as, yeah, $1,850, and then two bedrooms, you know, in the 2,100 range.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Other questions? All right, seeing none, could I have a motion to approve Council Bill 42?
I move to approve CB 42, Five Field Inglewood Station PUD at 1070 West Hampden.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
My second.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Sierra. All right, discussion. Member Ward?
Just like to compliment you on your collaboration with the neighborhood on this. A similar project, as you probably know, came up a couple of years ago, and there were some neighborhood concerns, which I think that you've taken steps in your meetings and with the plan to mitigate those concerns. So thanks for coming and being a member of the community. So, thanks for coming and being a member of the community and working with us on something that works well for this location.
Thank you, Member Ward. Others? Member Anderson?
I just want to thank the staff that went into, all the staff work that went into this, and as well as the developer for the work that went into it. I think this is the right time for this project, it's the right location, the right developer, the right project, and so I'm supportive of this, looking forward to it, and really, really plan to vote yes on this and excited about it.
Okay. Member, or Mayor Potem Sierra?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. I too will be voting to approve this measure tonight. I do feel that there's a lack of what is being termed as workforce housing within the city, so I definitely see that that would be definitely a benefit to many of our citizens, although I know that the rates, a lot of people cringe at the rates of what this may be, but when you look around the city to the north of us, these rates are actually more affordable than that. But definitely want to thank you as well for all the work that you do with this. I second Council Member Ward's comment about working with the surrounding neighborhood in terms of their concerns around traffic, so, but tonight I will be supporting this measure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Member Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will say that I like the product that you have offered to the city. I have some major concerns. I cannot support this project because of those concerns, not because I'm not impressed with the work that has gone into this. Inglewood, the infrastructure here cannot handle the increased density that is beginning to come. The other, one of the major pieces to this also, though, is that is industrial land. I personally believe that we need to protect our industrial area, because that is for future generation, generating income over and over. All of the income to the city will be one-time income, other than property tax, and the city gets very little of the property tax. Most of that goes to the county and the schools. I think there is insufficient parking. I think all the businesses that came and spoke in support of this, that are surrounding that, are going to be shocked when it goes in and they don't have parking in front of their businesses. I think the traffic impact is going to be greater than projected. There is not enough green space and landscaping. The increased density, the park in Lufy is really minimal compared to what it would cost, and I believe this council needs to look at making requirements for development in the future before we go any farther about having to provide green space. We're not going to let the people use the parks like they used to, so they need to have green space in the areas where they live. I thank you for the presentation. I do believe it's a good product, and it will pass, but I have some major concerns, so I will be voting no. Thank you very much.
Member Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank staff and the applicant. I know that a tremendous amount of work goes into these. I know it's not easy, and I will echo Member Ward in applauding the efforts of community outreach. I've heard from folks recently that there was a lot of firsthand contacts done, and that people really felt that they were spoken to on this, that live in the surrounding area. I will not be supporting. I do think these rates do not reflect resource housing. I don't think this reflects what a lot of families in Inglewood can afford. Now, I think that there's kind of a notion that we're building for future residents, that we need to bring people in. It does get a bit cynical to me sometimes, I think we're building for consumers as opposed to community members, that we need more wallets, we need just more money into the community, and I don't like to look at it that way. Again, I think that these rents would be a major stretch for many folks in Inglewood, or let's say their children, who are branching out on their own. So, for that reason, I won't be supporting, I'm not especially supportive of many of the concessions that were made either that Member Russell outlined. Again, I appreciate the applicant's work and certainly staff's as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? I will be supporting it tonight, and I am not fond of the pricing, but I have looked at it and agree that it does seem to be lower than what is to the north of us in some of the same area. I would really dearly like to see homeownership in further developments and hope that this council will be able to set a really good track or plan for that and strategic plan, but I do think this area, which was owned by a big company, which had very little involvement in the community from the people that worked there, they did have, they did purchase things within our city, and I think now we have people that will live in the city and purchase things in our city. So, we'll see some uptick, and I hope some great, sort of enlivening of that area of the city that isn't just people coming and going and parking RVs. This is definitely an upgrade in my mind. Any further comments? Mayor Potem, did you want to say more?
I'll throw it in. Just a clarification on my comment. I looked at my notes again. It's 50 of the units were going to be workforce housing, the rest were going to be market rate housing, but it doesn't change my vote, but just wanted to clarify that statement that, from what I said earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The clerk, please take the vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Potem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Council Member Russell and Council Member Questa.
Thank you. Council, how about if we take a break at this point and come back in about five, six minutes or so? Is that enough? All right. Taking a? And our next agenda item is 11C1, under Resolutions and Motions. 11C1 is a resolution to authorize application for Innovative Housing Strategy Grant, and our Director of Communication, Brad Power, is here to answer questions and any further explanation you might want to give. Do you have a slide? I don't think you do.
I do not, Mayor. Other than being promoted to Director of Communication for some reason.
Oh, gosh, you know what? I just read it and didn't even, my brain didn't even take, why did that happen? You're now Director? Oh, that is hilarious. All right. Any questions for, for Mr. Power here? Okay, Community Development, does anybody? Oh, Council Member Russell?
Thank you. Sort of a question. Why does the resolution not define which strategies we intend to pursue?
I think the resolution of support was just from the requirements that DOLA imposed on us to exemplify that from the elected body. It didn't specify that a complete portion of the strategies that would be studied would be required to be in the resolution of support. We'll define those in the application separately.
So, which strategies do we intend to pursue?
Based on the conversation that council had last week, we are including the strategies that are listed in Letter B in the attachment, those five strategies.
So, remind me, could some of those be replaced with some of the strategies at the bottom?
Yes, they could. If you give us direction tonight, we'll include the strategies that you direct us to include in the application. Just remember, based on the conversation we had last week, there do need to be a minimum of three.
Okay. So, I guess my one question is, three on under C, with respect to infrastructure, the creation of a dedicated funding source to subsidize infrastructure costs and associated fees related to publicly-owned water, sanitary sewer, storm sewers, and roadways infrastructure. Would you explain to me a little bit more what that means?
Well, again, the state crafted these, we did not. So, from my interpretation of what that would mean is the city would come up with a policy that would require either in Lufy's or something dedicated that future developments that would provide affordable housing would make some type of contribution toward those infrastructure elements.
Any further question, Member Russell? If not, I have one.
Not right now.
Okay.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Director Power, in the Community Development Office, who works on this particular grant if we get it? I mean, who, is it you, or?
Well, what we would try to do, Mayor, is incorporate this very closely into our Code Next project, which is the complete rewrite, as you're very much aware of, of our Unified Development Code, otherwise known as Title 16. Wade Burkholder is project managing that, but our entire planning team is involved in that project. This grant would afford us the opportunity This grant would afford us the opportunity to also have a consultant, most likely as a subconsultant to our existing Code Next consultant Gould Evans out of Kansas City. And that consultant would work both with staff, Gould Evans, and the council and the community to go forward on both the housing assessment and the strategy development.
I just wasn't sure how it gets kind of executed with your staff and who, who's the point person? Whether it's a lot of different points or they're?
Wade Burkholder will be our point person on this because we're going to fold it as much as we can into the Code Next project.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or clarifications from anyone? If not, could I have a motion to approve the resolution to authorize application for innovative housing strategy grant?
I move to approve the resolution to authorize application for the Innovation Housing Strategy Grant.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Siera, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Discussion. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to staff, I do appreciate the work on this. And I think that the, the initiative is, it's in the right place. And I think it's something that we need to focus on, but I will not be supporting due to the expansion of ADUs or what we discussed would be the support of the expansion of ADUs in all single family zoning districts. We fought a good fight on that one, and two years ago, we decided we didn't want that. It was maybe less than that. And I guess now we, we're going to change that through, through a grant application, which I think is kind of a roundabout way to do it, but I won't be supporting tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell. Oh, I'm sorry, was it, yeah, it is you, next.
Thank you, Mayor. I echo Councilmember Questa's concern about ADUs, and we did fight that battle. I have some other concerns. My other concerns is that we may end up adding more density than the citizens in the city really want. The other thing that is a little bit concerning to me is if we move forward to this, the loss of funds if we do not implement the suggestions that they come up with. So I will not be supporting this this evening either, thank you.
Thank you, others? Seeing none, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Nay.
Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem Siera?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Wilson?
Aye.
Let the record show five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Russell.
Thank you, next is 11C2. It's a resolution establishing park rules and regulations regarding off-leash dog privileges. And our Director of Parks, Recreation, Library, and Golf Course, Christina Underhill, and, oh, Dave Hill is here, Dave Lee is here. And you're, and?
This is Lindsay Peterson, our Open Space Activities Supervisor. So she oversees all of the field rentals with athletics and other different types of programs. Thank you. All right, so tonight, I'd like to just go over what the resolution that you've been sent is including. So it's designating parks with off-leash areas. Jason Park, we will be off-leash there. There'll be a fence separating the playgrounds and other activities on the south side with the north side activities, which would be off-leash. Along with, we're proposing a temporary fence to separate the multi-use field with the open space area that would be off-leash all the time to allow for field rentals for athletic programs to occur without conflict of off-leash dogs. Duncan Park is the other park we're moving forward with, with off-leash area. The off-leash will be, we'll be installing a fence to separate the north and south side. The north side of the park would be off-leash, as well as still, we'd be renting the field for different sports programs. And then the south side of the fence would remain on leash. Northwest Greenbelt will remain off-leash, no fencing, and Canine Corral will remain off-leash, but we'll look at improving some of the ground cover there. So this is highlighting Duncan Park. So you can actually see in this, this picture, this was taken last week, of the sports field location, so you can see the off-leash area. And then the fence proposed in yellow, and then leashes would be required on the south side where it has the red on leash. Jason Park, so this is better defining what that may look like. We are proposing two additional gates to give access to the sports field for on-leash activity if the temporary fence is placed up, that temporary fence is in the red, the permanent fence is in the yellow. So again, we're separating the on-leash area on the south side from the off-leash area to avoid conflict with the different programs we have going on. We do have three gates, so signage is going to be extremely important and something we've been thinking heavily about. So if, if the fence is up for sports use and we will allow dogs on leash, you can access that space for on-leash activities while sports use is going on through either of those gates. And we know that west side gate is heavily used to access the park. So that's some of the challenges that we have with that sports field. So that's why we're compromising and saying you can use it, but just have your dogs on leash. So these parks will remain on leash, pretty much everything that's not designated with an off-leash area. You can have your dogs in those parks, just keep them on leash. The hours, so regular park hours are from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Based off the discussion, discussion we had, off-leash will now become 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. year round. So some of the changes that have been discussed, Canine Corral, we'd like to partner with Inglewood Unleashed to determine the best ground covering to change to from the woodships. Increased signage, like I talked about, signage is going to be extremely important, and we want consistency throughout the parks, including our off-leash areas. Some of the proposed examples may be no off-leash passes point, so at Duncan, as you head south, that sign would be showing. If you're heading north, you'll see on-leash area. That way, all park users understand what the areas are and what to expect when they're in our parks. And then just a reminder, Jason Park, we do get requests from our athletic programs, the people that want to rent the field, seven days a week, they'd like to use it. However, as a compromise for the off-leash program, we are proposing not renting that field seven days a week, but giving it to the off-leash program a few days, if not four days out of the week. So the days are to be determined, but again, we will mark the field appropriately so everyone understands what those are, and we want to be consistent through the season. So if we determine it's going to be Wednesday to Saturday is when we'll use the field, we'll make sure that's posted, it'll stay consistent through that season. Licensing will be coming back to council from code enforcement, the police department. So we'll bring that back later, that's not part of the resolution in front of you today. And then implementation and review period. The new off-leash program we're proposing to launch January 1st of 2022. We'd like to have an educational period from January 1st to April 30th, and then start with actual enforcement May 1st. And then we will be presenting to our Parks and Recreation Commission at three, six, and then nine months. And then you all would hear the 12-month annual review of how the off-leash program has gone. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Underhill. I think I see Member Wink, light on.
Thanks, Mayor, thank you, Director. Quick question, on one of your early slides where you were reviewing maybe the fences, actually, it was a small, a small group of bullets, but anyway, that's lesser important. I feel as if I remember us discussing that temporary, the Jason Park, right, the red fence as being a pilot program. And I almost believe those words came out of the mayor's mouth. I know that the fence is temporary, right? We use it for the games, and then we'll be able to, to open those gates to the dogs and dog owners and non-sports affiliated parkgoers. But were we going to pilot that as a fence, as a temporary fence there, or not?
Good question. What I believe was discussed was the one-year time period. We'd bring it back to council and give a report on how it was working at that point to decide if we want to continue using a temporary fence, if it becomes permanent, if it comes down altogether.
Okay, great, and that's, is that in here and I somehow missed it?
That was one of the last slides, just the one-year annual review.
Oh, that, okay, for all of them, all the changes.
Correct.
Okay, and one more quick question. Do we have language that, so we have language that explains when the off-leash program is in, in effect? Do we have language that explicitly states that, for example, when there aren't sporting events and that the gate will, you know, maybe a little bit of a guarantee to the other park users that, yes, these times will be, you know what I'm saying? Will be times when you are able to use the park in these ways, X, Y, Z, from these hours to these hours. I mean, you mentioned the importance of signage because of these gates, but I'm wondering about maybe, maybe an overstated language to that effect as well? Just want us to not maybe leave that out?
I would completely agree. We'll do our best to make this as clear as possible for all park users. And, and we have talked about different ways of doing that, whether it's a sign on the gates, QR codes, posting on the website, probably everything, all the above. Because we do have a lot of park rules, and we know not everybody goes to a park and reads a sign. I don't, and I'm sure many of you don't either. And you may see it, but ultimately, we'll make it as clear as we can. And that's part of the educational period, too. We do have a new ranger that has started and in training, and so that's going to be a big piece of her job is the educating of our public, including our park staff that are out there daily.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilmember Russell, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the work. So Director Underhill, originally, wasn't there a temporary fence between the east and west section of the north side?
So we have the red dotted fencer that would be the temporary fence. Nothing proposed along the parking lot, and the permanent fence is that yellow line there.
Okay, this map gets turned around. So, but it is north, the parking lot's to the right, and I didn't see that at first. So the, the red is the temporary fence between the east and west side of the north side of the park.
Correct.
And then the yellow is the permanent fence.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Then the picture of Duncan Park, yes, that one. So what I've heard, I don't remember if I got an email or a text, that the off-leash area is on the wrong side of the fence where they have a place to water the dogs. Apparently, there's a place to water dogs down closer.
There is a doggy drinking bowl that's located on the back of the restroom.
How can they access that, on leash?
On leash, yeah. Unless we put something in the budget and construct another doggy drinking fountain to the north.
Okay, thank you, I just, because someone asked that question, so.
Other, great, other questions? Member Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Underhill, you spoke to the, I like how you kind of divvied up the week, and I know that that's not set in stone, but just something that, a starting point, do you mind going back to that slide? For Jason, that is, that you had mentioned the divided weeks.
Oh, this is where we have, yeah, the signage.
Thank you. And you mentioned that will be through the sports seasons. What months are those that the sports seasons run?
So our fields are open March 1st through October 31st. And each sport has different seasons, and so soccer, there's spring soccer and fall soccer. And it also falls in line with the Chassa seasons, which I know because of COVID, it kind of readjusted everything. But traditionally, you know, boys soccer is in the spring, and girls is in the fall. So we try to follow those as well.
So that would be, pardon me, that would be two-thirds out of the year, then? I count eight months there?
Roughly, yeah.
And correct me if that's not the, okay, okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Others? All right. Could I have a motion to approve 11C1? No, sorry, two, it's two.
I move to approve the resolution establishing park rules and regulations regarding off-leash dog privileges.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Anderson. All right, discussion. I think I heard Member Russell's go on first, and then Member Ward.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Actually, let Member Ward go first because it just was fleeting. It'll come back, thank you.
All right, Member Ward?
I'm going to be a no on this tonight. And the reason why is because of how we are doing this. I would like to see an ordinance, not a resolution. I believe that this is an exercise of our legislative authority, which under our charter must be done by ordinance. We are separating what is now illegal or illegal activity. And that, in my opinion, is a legislative action. Secondly, in the event that the citizens would like to challenge this action, if we passed it as an ordinance, they would have the right to circulate a referendum petition and place this on the ballot. They don't have that right as it applies to a resolution. So I will not be supporting this tonight because we are not doing this as an ordinance. I understand the procedure has been applied in the past, and that this procedure is likely perfectly legal. But my interpretation of the charter and the way I would like to see it applied does not allow me to lend my vote to this.
Thank you, Member Ward. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. The, the one, one kind of second thought that I'm having about the way we've structured this is the six to, six to 11 timeframe in the evening, especially in the winter. That would be all dark, I think, during that period, especially for probably a couple months in the winter. And I'm wondering if we could consider changing that to maybe 5 to 11 in the evening during the wintertime or during daylight savings time. So we give the people who want to utilize the dog park some time in the daylight in the evening.
All right, thank, so you're actually suggesting that the off-leash be timed with daylight saving time or something? Well, actually, it's at 5:00 even right now, it's still dark. Are you, so it's seasonal instead of just that?
Yeah, so I see, I'm thinking, you know, those hours would be most of the year. And then for at least a couple months of the winter months. I'm not sure what the best timeframe would be for that, but to pull it back to 5:00 p.m. just to have some daylight hours in the evening for off-leash use of the dog parks.
All right, thank you.
Just a point of information, if we're going to be, if, if daylight is a concern, then we would actually have to go back or earlier than that. Because the winter, December 21st, the winter solstice would be, what, like 4:45 or so is when the sun goes down? So I'm just saying, if that's the concern, that we probably should do like 3:00 p.m. to 11:00. If that's your ultimate concern.
Yeah, and that would, that would be the concern. I guess I'm, I'm thinking, you know, even when the sun sets at 4:45, there's still a little daylight until often 5:15 or 5:30. Maybe there would be a couple weeks in there, there wouldn't, but maybe, maybe 3:00 p.m. would be better. I don't, I don't know. 5:00 came to mind because I thought usually there's some light at 5:00 p.m. And that wouldn't be a significant change. But I don't know if there's support for that on, from the rest of council. I'd be happy to make a motion, or if anyone has any other suggestions in terms of the timeframe, maybe what months or times, as Mayor Protem suggested, I'm happy to, to talk about that, if there's any interest in it.
All right, let's hold that and see what Member Questa has.
I think Member Anderson has something that I'd be willing to consider as well. Especially being, I, I believe the months you'd be suggesting those winter months would be those off months based upon the calendar you outlined. And I definitely think kids still go to the parks in winter, mine do. But I think it's, it's a little less frequent than you get in, than you get in the spring and summer months. So I'd be willing to consider that. I certainly want to make as many accommodations as possible to both parties and all interested committee members that want to use the park, the dog park, the sports field, and all the things that are there. So I'd be willing to have that discussion as well. I, it's fair to say that at 5:00, there's not much light left. And so, you know, I'm not sure how much earlier we want to take that, but, but I'd be open to the conversation of moving it forward a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, was there something else, too, that you were, that you had your light on for? Because you, okay, others? So actually, okay, go ahead, Member, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor, I, I would be willing
Thank you, Mayor. I would be willing to entertain changing the hours as well. I know I was the one that wanted the consistency here, a consistency in terms of the hours, just because this is simple. This is a simple sign that we can put up that says six to 11 year round, right? So, but understanding the fact that there may not be done sunlight during the winter months, I would be willing to do either 3:00 PM or 4:00 PM, but I'd be, I'd be open to that.
Councilmember Anderson?
I would, I would want to suggest then, I think, 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, follow, matching up with daylight savings time, because it's an easy time that everyone's familiar with. And that would cover all of the days where it would be dark relatively early.
I, I, I think the beginning one and the follow, for, for me, is definitely there for the four, because right now it's dark at five and it will be soon four, but I'm not sure in the spring that that follows just the same way. So I'm a little concerned about that one. I, I think what I would want to do is ask someone to maybe think this through for us. We might want to, if this is a big thing tonight, maybe it's a tabling for one more until we get the light piece figured out. I don't know, Mayor Protem? Oh, I actually, Member Russell, you were first, and then.
Thank you, Mayor. So I remembered what my question is. Have, have you all talked with the schools at all to see if they would work harder to share, perhaps Hosanna Field?
Currently, the schools does not allow off-leash privileges on any of their, their fields or any of their school grounds. We've not talked to them, but I would imagine that they would remain pretty steadfast with their regulations as they are currently.
Right, I'm okay with that, but I'm asking, have you talked with them about perhaps hosting more sporting events to free up the park, like specifically Jason Park?
So there is a new IGA between the city and the school districts. With that, there are different rates, and the school's rates for outside user groups to come in is very, very high, especially compared to ours. The other thing to take into consideration is the size of the field and the age groups, because just as an example, using Pirate U Sports, if they have eight-year-old soccer, they can't play on lower Hosanna because that field's too big, and same with the baseball and softball fields as well, and vice versa as well for the older kids that need that kind of field space. What that we have at Jason, they wouldn't be able to use Hosanna because of the CHASA seasons and where they fall.
So do all of the schools, I mean, so like, say for younger sports, like eight-year-olds. So what about using Clayton or, or some of the other elementary schools? Because they don't necessarily have fields, but they could set up temporarily, just like in the park.
I think that's exactly the concern, is they don't have enough field space at the elementary schools when they got remodeled. Yes, there is open space, but there's hills or trees or not enough wide open space for it to be considered a playable field space.
All right, I, I do appreciate that. I appreciate your checking into it. I, we have eliminated the off-leash dog areas down to two parks. And I think that we are leaving out one element of the population that I think it's a very community-oriented, and we want to foster that in our community. So I appreciate your work. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem, Sierra?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to tag along on Member Anderson's point, I think I would still prefer to keep it in terms of months and not trying to figure out which Sunday daylight saving starts on and which one it ends on. So daylight saving starts in the month of November, it ends in the month of March. So I would say November 1st through March 31st. Have the hours, 4:00 PM, I believe you stated, or at least the 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, make that change. But then the months that I didn't state would keep these hours that we see on the screen.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yeah, I would, I would say November 1st to March or to February, the last day of February, the first day of March, because March does really have quite a bit more light than the other months, as the mayor pointed out. So if we could have it run through the end of February, I think that would make, make more sense.
Would, would 5:00 PM make a difference on that? Are you looking something up on light?
What's that?
Are you looking something up on light in Google?
Yeah, yeah, I have a, you know, a daylight, like a little graph here.
I mean, yeah.
I just want to get this done tonight. I don't want to punt this another.
I'd like to figure this out.
So I think, I'm looking at twilight at the end of March is, or at the end of February is almost 7:00 o'clock.
Oh, gosh, okay.
So, and, but at the, at the beginning of November, it's, it's about 6:00 o'clock. So I think definitely not the end of March, because at the end of March, you're into 8:30 is twilight. So I think it would be pretty simple to do November through the end of February.
In, in that case, I would prefer to go with 5:00 PM then, so that we, as kids come out of school and stuff, they can still play. And when, remind me of the start of the season again, it's when?
March 1st.
March 1st, okay. I guess it wouldn't matter.
It's exactly the same. It's March 1st to October 31st.
Yeah.
Saying the same thing.
Or November 1st. End of February doesn't matter. Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to change the hours, leave the hours as is, but during, for the, the summer months, but between November 1st and March 1st, have the hours be 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM in the evening.
All right, there's our second.
I'll second.
Whoa, I'm not sure who it was. Member Wink, I believe. All right, further discussion about that. Member Russell?
So will we be voting on an amendment?
Yeah, and then we go back. Okay, thank you. Yes, you could vote yes for this and no for the others still. Member Questa?
And I think that's clear, but Member Anderson, this is across all parks, not strictly to Jason.
Yes.
Thank you.
All the, that allow off-leash, right, right. Mayor Protem?
And just a further, further clarification, we're running it through February 28th, correct? Or February 20th to February 29th?
Well, that's why I said March 1st.
Well, March 1st to me is like the end of the day, March 1st, and now you're, don't really start until March 2nd.
February, yeah, well, February 28th. Yep, November 1st to February 28th, those are the dates I'm proposing in my.
All right.
Motion.
Any further discussion about that? Seeing none, can we vote on this amendment?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem, Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
At the record show, seven ayes.
Thank you. So with that amendment back to the original, any further conversation about that? Member Russell, go ahead.
I will not be supporting this because I do not believe it favors the citizens and what a majority of the citizens want. I think probably a lot of people are going to be happy, unhappy, equally unhappy. I think that's how Councilmember Questa put it at one point, and I think that's probably still true. So I, I will not be supporting that right now, and I actually do agree with Councilmember Ward on this. I do believe it probably would be a good idea to make it an ordinance so that the citizens have recourse to do something if they want, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Anderson, I believe?
Thank you, Mayor. I am, I would be, I want to, I want to do this tonight. I'd be happy with, you know, it's already done by resolution, so I don't think we're changing any, you know, we're not undoing any ordinance or anything, but I'd be happy if it came back as an ordinance. I think that's a fine suggestion. I'm happy to vote on it this way tonight. And then if down the road, we want to redo it as an ordinance, maybe after, after six months, if we do a reevaluate and then lock it in or something like that, I do think it's a valuable suggestion. I am happy with this overall. I think it's a good compromise. And the two, the big concerns that I had were making sure we maintain some good off-leash areas for the dog owners while also allowing people to bring their kids to the playground, knowing that they are very unlikely to encounter, they're much less likely to encounter an off-leash dog, which is a problem that I've personally experienced and I know many, many people have at the playground. So I think this strikes a pretty good balance. The one question mark I have is, is, is the temporary fence, how well is that going to work? And is it going to make portions of our park underutilized for large portions of the time and all of that? So I'd be happy to come back and look at that after some months, but I'm supportive of this tonight and would be happy to reconsider as an ordinance, according to Councilmember Ward's suggestion down the road. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, Sierra?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be supporting this tonight, even though I'm, I actually feel that we went too far with this. I actually have the opinion that we should have no off-leash dog areas in the, in the city. We are the only city that will be allowing off-leash dog areas. We have, well, the Northwest Green Belt would still be off-leash without any fence. I think this is closer, the reason why I'm voting for this is this is closer to what the citizens stated they wanted as part of the survey. We had 52% that said that they are okay with off-leash, but if there is a fence, and we are doing that at Jason Park and Duncan Park, 19% that they, 19% of the citizens stated that they wanted no off-leash parks. So I think that we actually are coming to a compromise in a sense that may even go against the greater, you know, of the citizenry of the city of Inglewood. So I've been concerned about just the dog attacks that have been occurring at the parks. We heard about 66 in the last five years. And so I think that this may be a better compromise, though, in terms of what was stated by the most of the citizens as part of the survey. So I will be voting yes for this.
Thank you. Member Questa?
Thank you. I, Member Ward brings up an interesting point with the ordinance versus resolution. And, and you know what, I would be happy, if it was, I feel like it's the same thing. It is in terms of the content of what would come before us. It is just the difference between how we go about voting on that. How much longer, and I know that we're past questioning, so I beg pardon here, but how much longer would we be talking for this to come back as an ordinance as opposed to a resolution? Is it pretty straightforward?
It's very straightforward. We could have it shortly.
Next 10 minutes.
I'm sorry.
Just kidding, the next few minutes.
It's, it's mostly formatting and drafting some additional provisions.
Understood. And you know, if, if the will was there by council, I'd be happy to do that. You know, and I appreciate the, the ability for citizens to petition, that if they think that this was unjustly passed by council, that they have the opportunity and the avenue to do that. I, you know, truth be told, if I was a betting man, I think if this came on a ballot, I, I think it would be passed as we're, as we're putting it forward or would have support. But I want people to be able to take that challenge, you know, to their fellow citizens if they feel they need to. So I would, I'd support the ordinance as well. I absolutely agree with everybody here who wants to get this over with, and I'm sure everybody has mentioned that at one point in time or another, so I appreciate that. This is a can we've kicked, it's real dented, this can. We've kicked this can a lot. So if, if this goes forward as a resolution tonight, I'm, I'm happy to support it. If people want to wait it out for, you know, maybe the next regular meeting, I'd be happy to do ordinance also. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Questa. It really depends on who's, who's got the can asking us to kick it down or not, what side they're on. Member Ward, you're next.
Another note on ordinance versus resolution is if we do this as an ordinance, it gets codified in the Inglewood Municipal Code. So anyone who is curious about the rules and regulations that govern our park relative to dogs can look up the Inglewood Municipal Code and see the justification for whatever rule they encounter at the park. As a resolution, it just goes on a sign, it becomes city policy, and if they want to know how that happened, they have to be savvy enough to look back in the minutes of previous council sessions and generally have a ballpark idea of when we took this action. So that's the other reason why I prefer doing this by ordinance.
Thank you, Member Anderson.
Question for City Attorney Niles, could we pass this as a resolution tonight and also pass it as an ordinance next time? Next council meeting?
Yes.
I would propose that we do that. Then we get it done tonight and we also do it again next time.
All right, I'd, I'd like to weigh in then. I, I really think that you ought to spend six months looking at this. I think it's, I think it gives all sides some time to look at it, see how it feels, how it's working out, and then bring it back as an ordinance. Otherwise, you're going back and forth and back and forth. I think it's, I think it's unwise, and I won't vote for that part of it then. I don't know what you do when you vote yes on a resolution and come back and vote no. You won't have my vote on it then. I think it's unwise.
What could we, if we, what would be the process to change the ordinance? Then you just have to do two readings, if we, if we wanted to go back and change this, if we passed it by ordinance, we could change it in six months, right, just by a new ordinance? Just be two readings instead of one?
Yes, we follow the two readings, and then it has to be codified in Muni code, which codifies all of our ordinances into municipal code, to the extent the ordinance modifies municipal code. And there is some cost to updating Muni code, but that's it.
I would strongly recommend if we go that route, that we have a list of other things that we've done resolution rather than ordinance, and to just to give some comparison on why we do one and not the other, particularly park hours with humans, all kinds of things that we have done by resolution. So I think it'd just be good to know, okay, what do we have out there, and what are we comparing this to? What makes sense and what doesn't? But I would take a little bit of time on that. I wouldn't rush into it, particularly because this one, I think we are kind of, not pretending, I think we're, we're hoping that we'll gain some information over the next six months on, did that work, or is that, was that a stupid idea? But it's really new, some of the ideas we're proposing. They're not, they've not been tried other places around us, but. Councilmember Questa? Oh, yeah. Member Anderson, did you have more? Okay. That's just my two cents, but. Okay, so we have a motion on the table with the amendment for a resolution. Is there any further comment about that? Mayor Protem?
Just lastly, I will be in support of this tonight, and I would be in support of having this as an ordinance come back to us next week or next meeting.
All right. All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa? Member Russell?
Nay.
Mayor Protem, Sierra?
Aye.
Member Ward?
May.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
At the record show, five ayes and two nays, the two nays being Councilmember Russell and Councilmember Ward.
All right, thank you. And then, so during councilmember's choice, which is next, I'd like to hear from everybody whether you wanted to come back or not as an ordinance. We'll get a consensus there, all right? So, yeah, so on to general discussion, mayor's choice. Actually had one thing, and I did not write it down on this one, but I cannot remember what it is. So thank, thank you so much for those of you that have been working on this years. Appreciate it. I will, I will refrain from anything right now and go on to councilmembers' choice. So you've already heard my piece on bringing it back in a week. I'd rather test some things out of it and then bring it back in maybe a month or two or six, but Member Anderson, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing for my report, but just to weigh in on bringing it back as an ordinance, I am supportive of doing it next week.
All right, thank you.
Or next regular council meeting.
Next council member meeting, okay. And then it would have to have two readings, so we'd just have to make sure we get it in. Yeah. All right, Member Russell, you're next. Councilmember's choice?
On councilmember's choice, I, I did do a council request on the, on the tax information for the Inglewood Chamber. And I am very concerned about how really, there is some more information that I would like. How many employees do they actually have? I noticed that their total revenue is $50,000 a year, and they pay of that $43,000 to the employees. So I know that of that $50,000, $41,000 is membership and assessment fees. I'm sure that the city pays into membership fees for us also, so of the income they're already getting, we are paying into that. And so to enter into a contract with them, it, it just makes me wonder what this city could have done if they would have given. if they would have given the ACE Committee $20,000 to work with. They are all volunteer. I am very concerned that the chamber is not really in good shape to enter into this agreement with the city. Thank you.
Do you want to weigh in on the ordinance versus, the ordinance coming back? No? So you don't care either way? All right, Member Questa?
No report and I'll support the ordinance coming back. Thank you.
Immediately?
Next, earliest convenience.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
No report and yes on the ordinance.
I'm just making note of this, so, thank you. All right, Member Ward?
Briefly, I encountered the 5G tower that was discussed earlier this evening as I was walking through my neighborhood earlier this week. And I have some concerns, and I have for some time, about how we approve or don't approve things that are in public right-of-way. There's concern in this case, as we discussed earlier, about what, who owns the property in question. But even putting that aside, if this is city right-of-way, I'm curious and a little concerned about how, you know, 30-foot tower gets approved in the city public right-of-way with no notification to the neighborhood. It's definitely a development that affects the neighborhood. And the residents were rightly concerned to see construction occurring so close to their home of such a large project. I think overall, from what I've heard, we handled the matter fairly well as a city in that when the resident called to complain, somebody came out, examined the project, looked at the permits, and issued a stop work when the proper permits weren't in place. But I would like to, going forward, take a look at the question of public right-of-way and how, how we approve that and whether or not it requires notification to the neighbors.
All right, thank you. And I will weigh you in as yes, bring it back right-of-way for the ordinance?
I would be a hypocrite if I said no, so, yes.
I just wanted to confirm that. And Member Wink, you're next.
No report this evening and yes on the ordinance.
Bringing it back ESP, okay. Great. Go ahead, Member Questa or Member Russell?
I just wanted to respond to Member Ward's concerns. And I really think that perhaps that is something that this council should weigh in on, whether we would allow. I can understand those towers perhaps in industrial areas or commercial areas. But putting those type of towers in residential areas, I think it might behoove this council to address those issues before it gets away from us.
Great, Member Questa?
Thank you, Mayor. It's along the same lines. And I think that it may be, and I know staff is gathering information on this. And I think they've been contacted by several members. But I think this warrants a study session once all that information has been brought. And I know I'm short timer, I may or may not be here. But it seems like an issue that will continue to arise in the future in one capacity or another. So it seems worthy of council's attention. And I appreciate those citizens bringing it forward as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think I'm hearing a study session. Does anybody disagree with that? And we'll go ahead and put it on the list and try and get it on soon after all the data is together. Great, Member, or Mayor Protem?
Just a clarification. Are we just talking about public right-of-way? Or are we talking about telecommunications?